All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the special session, Board Meeting of July 1st, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Pledge of Allegiance, all lead it this morning. Please rise. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Clerk Nishii, are there any public comments this morning?
Are there any public comments up there? No, I don't see any.
Okay. Interview and voting process approval. We need a motion and a second to approve the following interview and voting process for trustee area seven provisional appointment. Candidates will draw numbers to determine the order of the interviews. Candidates will remain in the district conference room prior to their own interview while the individual interviews are taking place. The process will be repeated for each candidate. Each candidate will have 20 minutes to answer the questions. Candidates are able to be in the boardroom after their interview is complete and prior to the board discussion and voting. A roll call vote will be taken on each candidate after the interviews. Board members can vote yes on more than one candidate. The candidate with the most votes will be nominated and appointed. If there is a tie, meaning two or more candidates get the same number of votes in their initial roll call voting, then the board will go through the same process of voting on candidates who tied until there is one candidate with the most votes. May I have a motion for this process in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Candidate interview order. At this time, we will conduct a lottery to determine the order that the candidates will be interviewed. Dr. Zedlow.
Thank you. We're going to bring the candidates in and they will draw a number out of a basket and that will be their interview order. And so, Mr. Wen is getting the candidates. So if we could have the candidate state your name as you draw, then we'll, and tell us what number you get.
Alba Bach. Three.
Angelina Legoria.
One.
Francisco Noyola.
Two.
Luis Gonzalez.
Nine.
Axel Roman, number four.
Must be number five. Mike Gomez, number five.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll have the candidates that are two through five go back to the conference room. And if candidate number one wants to take a seat at the table, that would be great.
Mr. President, we do have one public comment came in afterwards.
Thank you, Clerk Nishii. I'm going to reopen public comment. We didn't see a card. So the person that had public comment?
Tajuta Gilbert McLean. Tahada, very good.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, ABC Unified School District Board members. Thank you for letting me speak today. I am here on behalf of Ms. Angel Legoria. I've, I'm work, I'm coming, um, let me first start saying. In the 2022, 2022, 2022, 2023 school year, I worked alongside Ms. Legoria in the Booster Club as a vice president. She's our executive vice president. And over seven years, I've been here at ABC. I've been working in many, many different capacities. As a community service member, I've been elected officers on many gift committees, council members. I've been done work at Laco for their executive committee, committee. And so, I am here to speak on her behalf because I would like you to know about her strengths and what she can bring to the board. Ms. Legoria is very dedicated, very hardworking. I can tell you tirelessly, she is, if she wasn't here right now, she would be working right now to help the students in our community. She's very diligent. She's leadership, she's many leadership qualities. Let me let you know, when I first started with the Booster Club, the Booster Club is an organization that's comprised primarily of parents that work tirelessly for free to serve all of the students here at the school site and through the district. We raise money for many of the events and we put on those events. We work manually physically and mentally and with our hearts and our compassion to serve the community. For the football, for the Cerritos football team, which is the reigning 605 champions back to back. It's our Booster Club that was pertinent, vital for their success. We put on fundraisers from before the football season even started. We worked tirelessly to raise money. We would do pancake breakfast. We would be helping the students for their, for their photos for the year. We would be reaching out to all of the, the parents on that team to help raise money for those students. And everything is for the, for the students here at ABC. We do a lot of community events. The Booster Club was responsible, had some help in the tree planting ceremony. We had some football players go out. My son was one of the members that went out, helped plant trees for the city of Artesia. So let me get back to speaking about Ms. Legoria. Ms. Legoria, she works tirelessly as our leader. She problem solves, meaning she comes up with solutions when we're like, okay, what do we do now? We're stuck. We have this, this, we have to meet these, these, these goals and these standards. What do we do next? She lays out a plan and if she doesn't have the answer, she goes and she researches it to find the answer to a problem. One example of this is when we were having problems with, at the games, at the football games, we ran out of food. We worked with all of the community members, businesses in the ABC School District, and we were able to get that taken care of and get food to the game so that we can continue to raise money for the, for the football team, to support them so that they could be able to have their ceremony, their ceremony, their football ceremony that we, we sponsor entirely. The Booster Club sponsors the whole thing entirely. We set up the tables, we clean the facilities, and also for each of the games, we would go and we would, because you know, Cerritos High School does not have a football, we do not have football facility. So we have to go to Artesia, we have to go to Gar, or we have to go to different locations to try to make sure that our, that our team is well represented and that we can raise the money to support the team. So Ms. Legoria is a central and vital part of those efforts. She, she is a parent, but she has a compassion to serve. And she would be a tremendous resource and a vital just support to this board. If you want to hear about how we can improve and, and keep, you know, the reputation of ABC, how it's been throughout the years, what we know, award-winning district, please, please seriously consider Ms. Legoria. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move to the candidate interviews.
Thank you. All right, our first question. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? And what is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
Thank you for that question. So for the role of public schools, it's definitely to go ahead and educate our children, not only in the school, but how to be great community leaders in the long run and the future. Now, as far as the board fulfillment of that purpose, it's just overseeing, making sure those policies, you know, making sure that it's the overall fits for the needs of every student, teachers, staff, administrators, communities, and parents. So as a whole, that's what it would be.
Thank you. Question two. What are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? Which is your highest priority and why?
I love this question because I, I feel super proud to be part of ABC. I have for a long time. Definitely the distinguishedness of it, all the academic achievements that we have received here, not only nationally and statewide, locally, but just in the home, making me feel good. When I say, you know, my kids come to AB Unified School District, ABC, they're like, oh, wow! You know, just that awe moment of knowing that I'm representing such a, a high statute of, of a facility and a unit as a whole. The, the board plays a vital role with, with it all, for sure, definitely. Seeing that our students succeed overall, and again, it's not just the economic part of it, of their education, but as a human outside, when they, you know, graduate and they become leaders for like what we would be, you know, today. So that, just making sure we, we raise really good people all around, for sure. Making sure we, you know, you know, allocating resources, do they have the funding, especially in the area that I'm looking to sit at? Do we have the fundings? And where can we implement those so that if there is a lack in maybe, a lack in reading, are we providing our teachers with that resource? Are we providing them with, you know, more modern day education to give those lessons to them?
Thank you. Question three. As a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role, both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
Well. The board, like I said, it plays a vital role. And it really, it hits my heart because it's very important that we understand that our children are heard and our students, our staffers is heard, right? So my primary purpose is being accessible, being that voice of reason, having a pulse on what's going on, what's needed, what's maybe, what worked, what didn't work in what area. I believe that we have a great represented school, high school. Whitney High School is one of the, the leading schools in California. How do we replicate that into our other schools? We have obviously all the resources because we have the awards to show for it. How do we apply that to all of our high schools? Setting those policies again, making sure that, you know, we, we collaborate with each other and making sure that at the end of the day, it's all going back to our students. Fulfilling that role as an individual, as a board member, participating like this in board meetings. I come to a couple of board meetings already where I've sat in the back and I remember being here almost at one hour, like one o'clock in the morning. It was like, well, it's important to me because it's important to our teachers, it's important to our students, especially for my family. You know, we have, my mom has 17 grandchildren and all of them have come here so far. I have the youngest and the secondest, and the second one already graduated. I, I, my niece graduated from here, my son will graduate next year from here. So we started here with ABC and like I said, my son's the youngest one, he's four, he'll be starting soon. So we'll end here. And so really just being a part of a legacy and continuing that is, is really where I see myself as a, as a board member.
Thank you. Question four. What are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
So this is another great question, thank you. Access to resources and support in that sense. Parent engagement. I, I've only been new to Hawaiian Gardens for about two and a half years, maybe two, a little over two years now. And I, I was, did some research and I see that there, there is a lot of, not as much parent involvement. And that could be very much so because both parents need to work. So how do we as a, as a school, support those parents? If we have, and this is just an idea I had out there, if we had an overflow of parents at another school, could they offer their time maybe at our schools over in the other areas? I, I love when I go take my son to Nixon and I see people from Cerritos High School giving their time and the watchdogs. And I'm like, but aren't you supposed to be teaching first period? And they're just like, yeah, but I have first period off, so I'm here to give that, you know, volunteer hours because it's needed. That'd be great to replicate that into our schools in that area and that might be a good support to help eliminate that concern I have that we do, do lack in, in our area.
Thank you. Question five. What would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
This is a really good question. Thank you for this one because as a parent, I'm in there a lot. And so, I'm, I'm all over from elementary, middle school to high schools and different high schools at that. I have a, my exchange student at Artesia. So this is very fun to me because I would like to seek clarity in anything and everything. If I don't understand it, I need to understand it. So I would seek clarity and my partnership with the superintendent, if I, if I didn't get it from maybe the administrator by asking them that, I definitely would seek counsel and ask, hey, I need some clarification. Are you able to, you know, help me understand this before I make an executive decision on something? Before I put 100% into it, can you just make sure I know that I know everything that's needed from every viewpoint? What stakeholders, that's, you know, students, that's parents, that's community.
Thank you. Question six. Please share your response if a parent were to corner you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot topic.
This has happened to me before. So I really like this one, being that, you know, with the Booster Club. And what I do just normally, I acknowledge what they're saying. I, I hear parents because like myself, I probably done it, maybe the one or two of you, you know, pull over and, and just acknowledging that I was heard and that you gave me the time, because time is everything for me. So when you gave, gave, giving that parent the time to hear what they have to say, take into consideration what they're saying, and then bringing it back to the board and the superintendent, because this would be my, you know, colleagues, hey, look, this was brought up to me as, as a board member. But I wouldn't promise anything to a parent. I would, what I normally do would be just to let them know there will be an answer. Whether they like that answer or not, that result, it, it really ultimately comes down to what's the betterment of everybody involved. So I would acknowledge them, I would make sure they were valued and they were heard. And then I would probably encourage them to come speak, come public comments. So that way, it's noted around publicly that there's a concern and that we can address it in the, in the proper manner, for sure.
Thank you. Question seven. How does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
Surveys. I love your guys' surveys. I do those surveys all the time and I give my honest opinion. Definitely the advisory committees, which are, I think vital, just having that pulse again on the community. Allowing public comments for everybody, you know, all around, like I said, teachers, students. He can even come in here, which I applaud all those students that come and speak up because it's not easy to stand up here and speak on this microphone. So really giving that opportunity to be open and transparent, that, that's something definitely. You know. Deliberations on important, that's another one, deliberations on important issues would be just, again, having an open forum for them to come and be able to speak and, and at least have that five minutes to acknowledge, hey, like this is what, give us acknowledgement of what's happening.
Thank you. Question eight. Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
So I definitely, I feel like I have a lot of strengths. Leadership, I, I love to partner with people for sure. Communication, I, I love to communicate, I think in different forms, whether it's body language or just speaking in general. Probably my most favorite though is collaboration. Being on the board with the boosters, I've learned you've had to collaborate with many personalities. And I love the diversity of it all. I love that we can all come into a room and have different opinions and really just be there for the main purpose. And that's, in my case, what's best for the boys. What, what, how much can we get them, you know, to get the new uniforms that they want or the protein bags that they need? How can we help them succeed? So all they got to do is perform. Same thing I think I would bring to this board is collaboration, knowing that we all come from different backgrounds, different perspectives, and we can respect that of each other. So that's what I think.
Thank you. Question nine. What are your ideas to improve the district?
Parent involvement, for sure. I think that's definitely key when it comes to success. I, I'm a big person supporting our teachers. I was raised with my grandfather, a union base. My mom's, works for a school district. I'm very much, hey, our teachers are what's going to get us to get our kids to, you know, learn and be better. They're, they're the hands-on people. And I always tell my teachers when I come in to see my, my, my students or with the teacher, how can I help you help my child? We have one common goal, that's that this child succeeds. So how do we partner together? Because it really is, half the day, they're going to be with their teachers. So how do we support our teachers with modern technology, with modern teaching lessons? Are we cutting edge? You know, what can we learn and, and how can? Are we cutting edge, you know, what can we learn and, and how can we better them, so then ultimately it betters our children?
Thank you. Final question this morning, identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
So this was probably the most funnest one for me to answer because again, I, I support my teachers one hundred percent and I'll never forget, I was picking up my daughter from Artesia High School and there was teachers out there holding the, the signs, come support us, you know, to our contracts, our raise. And I was so supported, I was, I was here and I was ready to, you know, speak, but they had so many people and I was like, well, I don't wanna beat you guys, yours are here already so long, but, but I, I definitely, I was, I was felt so strong about, they do need to be equally paid. They do need to be equally funded, just like any competitive, you know, district around us. So supporting them, I was so happy that that finally got resolved and um, you know, taking into consideration, again, my biggest thing is if we support our teachers and our staff, then they're supporting our children, they're educating our children. That collaboration overall, making sure that at the end of the day, we're always on the cutting edge, we're always, you know, reminding people why we're the ones to watch, where we're the district to, to be, you know, why people should join us, why students should come here, you know, that, that's a, a fun thing and even with my exchange student I have from Japan, his mom is like, ABC, oh my gosh, I mean, if Japan knows about us, we, we should probably look into this kind of funnel to have, to get four more foreign exchange students here. Because obviously our teachers and staff and administrators and the board is doing something right. You know, you guys have done it right thus far, so definitely was, was a big support and happy with that one. So making my decision would be making sure that overall, it was best for the community, it was best for our students, it was best for our, our staff and, and that ultimately growth, growth is shown.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll now transition to our next candidate. So our second candidate is Francisco Noyola. Make sure you speak into the mic, good morning.
Good morning.
We'll start with question one, what do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
Well, I believe the, the main purpose of public schools is to provide a quality education. Public schools are here to prepare students for real world, for the real world, and that is through having them develop the skills and knowledge necessary to excel. What is the role of the school board trustee in this fulfillment? Um, we are there to support, we are there to encourage those students to excel academically and support them with resources inside and outside in the community. As a board member, our main responsibility is overseeing that the school, the staff, and that the students are meeting our goals and we oversee them all.
Thank you. Question two, what are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? What is your highest priority and why?
The number one thing I'm proudest of is the students' success. I graduated from Garrett High School and I'm proud to see all my former gladiators uh, becoming leaders in the community, some of them went off to four-year universities um, here locally and in the rest of the country, I'm glad to see some of our, my old friends now patrolling the streets, they're now sheriff officers. I'm proud to see some of my friends going off to become teachers here at ABC. Um, that is the main thing I'm most proud of that. Our alumni are becoming the leaders of tomorrow. And what would I like to accomplish as a board member is just to continue that, to continue to inspire our students to reach big, to dream big and to know that they have support, that they are, we see them and we want them to grow, just as we all went through the same things going through ABC, going through high school, um, we want the best for them. And my highest priority is, um, especially for Hawaiian Gardens, is safety and access to resources.
Thank you. Question three, as a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
Um, our main responsibility is uh, to govern the entire school district and provide direction for staff and the educators. As an individual, my personal goal would be to try to bring additional resources. ABC does a great job of ensuring that students have access to counseling, tutoring, after-school activities, sports, and personal development, as well as having excellent academic courses. But after the bell rings and after school ends, uh, that, those resources stop. So my personal goal would be to bring additional resources from outside, partnering with the community. And as a board, I would hope that we can all work together to do the same for, across the entire district.
Thank you. Question four, what are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
Uh, like I said earlier, safety is number one in my book. Hawaiian Gardens, um, in the past year, we've had some incidents of violence in the community and that's caused a lot of concern for the parents, uh, so much so that some parents were even scared to send their kids to school. So safety would be my number one concern and, and tying in the second thing would be uh, those resources, because when an incident like that happens in the community, it not only scares the families, but it also creates uh, trauma for, for those families that are the victims of violence and that is felt widespread because Hawaiian Gardens is such an interconnected community that if one thing happens to one of us, it, it happens to everyone. So um, that is, that is one of the, the major issues that I would hope to address as a school board member, safety.
Thank you. Question five, what would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
Well, as a school board member, we follow a chain of management, I would go um, to the department where I felt that I wasn't getting the accurate information and I would also, you know, do my own research and, and get my own, uh, get, do my own research, but also rely on um, the rest of my school board members uh, to be, to work collaboratively to address this. But uh, I work with the counselors, I work with the teachers here and the educators at ABC and I know they do a great job of being very detail oriented, I've listened to their presentations and they do an excellent job. I know they, they want the best, so I'm, I'm sure that, that doesn't happen quite often.
Question six, describe your response if a parent can, cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot topic.
Well, first and foremost, um, I implore parents and students to approach me and talk to me about issues that are concerning to them. In that situation, um, especially if it is a hot topic issue, I would first listen and make them feel that I'm listening to what their concerns are and being empathetic and, and being reasonable. In that moment, I would not make any promises. Of course, every decision we make has to be reviewed, uh, we have to have the right evidence for it. And I don't believe in, you know, just saying, saying what, what you, and saying whatever it takes to, you know, move ahead, I believe in, in doing my due diligence and, and taking a stand.
Thank you. Question seven, how does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
Well, besides the, the public comments at each item, I, I know here at ABC, we give the opportunity for residents, students, and parents to, to give a comment on every item we discuss here. Uh, and that is a great opportunity, but also I would um, support the parents and the students and the families to get involved more in the schools. Uh, parental involvement is a big, is a big, is a big thing in Hawaiian Gardens that I would like to see more of. I would like to see the parents um, getting involved more, getting to know their educators, getting to know the principals. And my role would be to help open up the campuses so they can have more of those opportunities to get more involved.
Thank you. Question eight, please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Well, one of my main strengths I would like to say is I'm, I'm a good collaborator, collaborator, collaborator. Um, and I work already in the community, uh, working for the Department of Public Health, I have access to go into the schools already and may create those partnerships and networks so we can address um, those needs that the students are, are facing. Currently, in my role, I get to work with Fetty, Ferguson, and Hawaiian and helping the students that aren't doing, that aren't meeting the goals of the district, uh, meet those goals with outside support. That is one of my strengths, that I bring outside resources and help, bring outside support so that we have those wraparound services around our kids.
Thank you. Question nine, what are your ideas to improve the district?
Like I said earlier, parental involvement would be a big, a big topic for me to, to push for Hawaiian Gardens. Um, I've seen it work at Hawaiian Elementary, um, Dr. Lozano did a great job creating a community around Hawaiian. And, and doing so, parent, parents felt more involved in the student's success. They were learning themselves about our district initiatives, our district goals, and it created a more holistic approach to, for the students to, to excel. So that is one thing I would like to see more and another issue would be in safety, regarding safety would be safe passages. I've seen it work in other districts and areas where violence is more abundant, especially gang violence. So a safe passages program in Hawaiian Gardens would be, would be great to see the community take ownership and responsibility for violence in, in the community, so I would hope to bring that to the school board.
Thank you. Final question this morning, identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff consideration, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Uh, the, the one issue I did a lot of research on was safety. Last year in March, we had, or in, last year in February, there was a shooting at Heritage Park and it was a concern for the students, the parents and the community surrounding it. As well as in Hawaiian Gardens, we had many shootings, we had actually two students that were shot and that is a tragedy. So at the board, we updated our school, our school safety plan and we gave opportunity for the parents to get involved and one of the, one of the biggest concerns was that we need to step up our safety in our schools and that is why I think uh, safe passages would be a great program because it gives the responsibility, it shares the responsibility with the school district and the community. So it involves, you know, the sheriffs, the educators, uh, parents and the students, so they can have a say in what they need to be addressing their own community. As far as the legalities, I understand as a school board member, there is certain information that we are confidential and privy to know. So I know communication is a, a big concern for residents that they feel like the school board isn't communicating effectively enough, so another, another topic on top of the safety would be communicating more effectively and making the, making the community felt like we're sending out appropriate information uh, directly to them at the right time. Because without rumor control, um, things can escalate when things aren't actually happening besides on social media. So, um, communication as well.
Thank you. We appreciate you today. We'll now transition to our third candidate this morning. Our next candidate is Alba Bach. If you wanna make sure you speak into the microphone, good. Welcome.
Good morning, um, Dr. Sitlow, Board President, Mr. Beach, Board Clerk, Mr. Nishi, Board Vice President, Mrs. Se, Dr. Rios, Dr. Ogenio, Mrs. Soyou, and all district staff.
So we'll go through each question and we'll start with having you share your response to question one, what do you see as the basic purpose of public school? And what is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
I believe it's to provide knowledge and skills to the students so that they can be successful adults. And uh, the role of the board um, in fulfilling that purpose to approve and support programs, policies, goals that will uh, ensure the students succeed with their academic um, goals.
Thank you. Question two, what are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member and which is your highest priority and why?
I'm proud that it provides a range of support for uh, students' needs. For instance, Tracy High School, it gives students a second chance, you know, in their education. What would I like to accomplish as a board member? Uh, to improve the performance of our schools in Area Seven, which is the highest priority uh, for me, to ensure that the students and their families in Area Seven are receiving the services and support they require.
Thank you. Question three, as a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
Yes, um, I believe my role will be student achievement. And as an individual, how will fulfill that uh, role? Will be to visit schools and speak to principals and uh, find out, you know, what supports the students are needing or if the the students' needs are being met. Um, and as a member of the governing board, as a unified team, you know, support the goals and uh, policies that will increase the student achievement.
Thank you. Question four, what are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
Absentism, poverty, language barriers, acculturation. Parents are not technologically literate. And I believe that more tutoring is needed.
Thank you. Question five, what would you do if you believed an administrator had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
I will ask more questions because I would like to make an informed decision.
Thank you. Question six, describe your response if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot topic.
I will direct them back to the school that their child is attending uh, to speak to the principal, you know, there's a chain of command to follow.
Thank you. Question seven, how does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
Uh, I will encourage parents and members of the community to uh, watch, attend, and participate in uh, board meetings. And they can also email, contact their uh, board member.
Thank you. Question eight- Question eight, please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
I believe I have uh great people skills, I'm a good listener. I believe I can relate to the um, to, to the residents uh in Hawaiian Gardens and um on a personal level. I'm a good problem solving and I embrace teamwork.
Thank you. Question nine, what are your ideas to improve the district?
Allocate resources strategically to support quality uh instruction, support low performing students, uh review and revise uh policies to see if they're still working or they need to be changed. Support professional development. I read that engaging teaching is a number one factor that impacts student learning. And have more uh student and parent surveys.
Thank you. Last question this morning, identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Um yes, it was uh on June twentieth uh when Mr. Nguyen was talking about the arts and music and instructional material discretionary uh block grant. How I will balance that community concerns. I would, you know, just say that um I will ask, you know, questions about, you know, why um we are voting like this uh on something else that was not um the primary purpose of that block grant. And um I, I was listening to, to the meeting and I know um different board members were concerned that, you know, there's a lot of need on uh new instruments or um, you know, s- some other uh schools doing fundraising um when that money should have, you know, been used um on that instead of, you know, what was voted on. But I believe that, you know, as a team, um it's important to, to vote. Even if my vote was to be uh different, I believe that, you know, we can respectfully disagree and move on, you know, for what's better for the, for the students and for the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now transition to candidate four. Our fourth candidate is Axel Roman. Axel, make sure you speak into the mic. We'll start this morning with question one. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
Thank you for having me today this morning. The most basic purpose of public schools is to educate the nation's next generation of citizens. With the advancement of technology and innovation, schools had to adjust and evolve too. Today, public schools in California serve all children and are safe place, uh spaces for our young people to become lifelong learners. The role of the Board of Trustees in this objective includes providing oversight of public schools, ensuring accountability, providing support and advocating on behalf of the families and the schoolchildren of the district. Working in tandem with our families and administrators, the board can change the direction of the school district if circumstances require.
Thank you. Question two, what are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member and which is your highest priority and why?
Uh ABC Unified School District has committed itself to ensuring that every child has access to quality education in our community. I am most proud of our school district making large strides in closing the achievement gap and having been recognized by the state of California as being leaders and achieving exceptional student performance. As a board member, I specifically would look, uh would like to see improvements and further investments in school safety measures in and around our public schools. ABC Unified and our municipalities offer wonderful programs uh that are often underutilized by members of the community who often need them the most. It is important to me that children and their families are aware of the vast resources available to them in a way that is not demeaning or discouraging.
Thank you. Question three, as a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
To begin, providing civ- uh civilian oversight of our local schools is one of the many roles entrusted to the trustees. Additionally, as a trustee, it would be my responsibility to advocate on behalf of our local schools, families, and administrators and set the direction of our school district. As a member of the school board, I would fulfill my duties by working with fellow members of the board in a positive and professional manner and being an active listener to any and all who have concerns about the direction of the schools.
Thank you. Question four, what are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
Two of the primary concerns raised by members of my community regarding academic learning and support are school and community safety and campaigning to a- uh increase advertisement and outreach efforts to families that are socio-economically disadvantaged in our city. ABC Unified and our cities have invested lots of time and resources into programs designed to help our most at-risk youth and their families. But for reasons unknown to me, many of the students uh do not receive the help they can get from our local schools or cities. I understand that our schools serve the best and the brightest because of the commitment of staff and teachers and the talent that our youth possess. That is why in a competitive environment, we as a district should continue to invest in school, safety personnel, technology, and infrastructure.
Thank you. Question five, what would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
Understanding that mistakes happen and that we are all human, I would not be disillusioned or upset if the information was disseminated with or without intent or uh, with or without mal, uh malintent. I would use the proper channels of communication and express my concern directly to appropriate staff and trustees. Transparency is vital to maintain a healthy relationship between the board, the district, and the families we serve. Therefore, in order to be as transparent as possible, I would be as open and honest to the extent given by law. And regarding being provided with incomplete or inaccurate information at the following board meeting.
Thank you. Question six, describe your response if a parent can, cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot topic.
Any parent or person in the community has a right to press me or any one of our elected members of a elected office in the grocery store or wherever it may be. So long as they are respectful, I as a trustee would respond and be an active listener in their concerns. I will simply hear them out and redirect them to any online resources and encourage them to attend the next board meeting with as many friends and families as they can. I am always glad to see people looking to get involved in the democratic process. And often that means having encounters that may be awkward in a grocery store. My experience as the current vice chairman of the City of Hawaiian Gardens Planning Commission has given me valuable insight into public relations. I would bring my experience working with residents and city council to the school board where the public demands are similar.
Thank you. Question seven, how does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform the board deliberations on important policy issues?
Being easily accessible to members of the public is important in maintaining positive relations. Most effective, to most effectively ensure opportunities for parents and community members to express their wide range of viewpoints would be to simply direct them to any and all opportunities for them to get involved. As I said earlier, I take great pride in knowing that members of the community are willing to speak out and to stand up for those they love. Taking into account what I had, uh, no, pardon me, I already said that. Again, encouraging members of the community uh who lack the knowledge of how to participate in local government, whether it is because they feel intimidated, unwelcome, or simply do not know the process. It would be my job to instruct them and to educate them on how to get involved.
Thank you. Question eight, please describe, excuse me, please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
From when I was in high school, I have always felt compelled to be involved in the community. Whether it was simply volunteering on the weekends, giving school supplies to needy students, or spending my summers out in Skid Row feeding the homeless. As a student at Long Beach City College, I committed myself to studying political science. I would go on to be admitted into the honors program. Working with the college, the honors program, and the honor societies, I as a representative of the clubs at the uh Long Beach City College would work to open the first Viking closet. A place where students could donate clothes, school supplies, and canned food for all who are in need. Searching for more opportunities to be involved, I had asked my aunt, my aunt if I could come into her special education classroom and volunteer. She gladly accepted my help and I would spend my last year of community college volunteering in her special education classroom at Independence Elementary in South Gate, California. Though the school is not in the prettiest of places or in the most welcoming of environments, I understood that the staff, the teachers, and the parents all had a common cause, their youth. Working with students with learning disabilities gave me a new perspective on what it meant to give back to the community. It taught me how to be patient, how to be kind, and how to be empathetic. Later, I would be admitted into UC Berkeley, UCLA, UC San Diego, and many more. And after reviewing which schools had the best food options, I chose UCLA. Once settling in, I would immediately run and be elected to the UCLA Bruin Democrats as the transfer representative, where I would work alongside other campus organizations to advocate on behalf of CAPS or the Student Mental Health Services, student housing affordability, and ending student hunger on campus. After graduating, I would return to Hawaiian Gardens with my years of civil, civil service and education, where the city council would ask for me to serve on the planning commission. And I would be appointed unanimously the youngest city planning commissioner in the city's history. And not too long ago, council again, along with the mayor, would call on me to apply for the position of member trustee Area Seven for the ABC Unified School District, bringing in my years of experience and a fresh new perspective to represent Area Seven for the ABC Unified School District.
Thank you. Question nine, what are your ideas to improve the district?
Many families in my community particularly choose to enroll their students in other schools and other districts because of safety concerns. As a trustee, I would advocate and vote to approve measures to further expand school and community safety investments and programs. I have lived next to Ferguson Elementary my entire life. I see every day the high volume of families that walk to and from school. And further investments into security personnel, technology, and infrastructure to give them a peace of mind would be my priority as the next member of the trustee, trustees.
Thank you. Final question, identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Wanting ABC Unified to remain a competitive school district because we staff some of the best teachers and uh educate some of the brightest minds. One of the most recent board discussion meetings that took place in May regarding increases to daily pay rates for both substitute teachers and child development permit substitute teachers. Although this did not include other positions, it was a start. Understanding that government is a slow process, but it has to begin somewhere. Increasing the pay rate for substitutes and child uh development permit substitute teachers proves that this board is committed to remaining competitive in an environment where we need substitute teachers. We need the best and the brightest, and in order to do so, we need to increase their pay. And I see that this board is doing that. And I will continue uh to support bolstering pay rates to stay competitive with surrounding districts in order to attract and retain the best and the brightest in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will transition to candidate five. Our fifth candidate is Michael Gomez. We'll have you make sure you speak right into the microphone.
Okay.
We'll start with our first question.
Okay.
What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
Okay. Well, I think the, the main role is to provide the, the learning environment so that every child has the opportunity to, to be successful in life, no matter which venue they choose. I mean, it's not every child will go to a, a college or university, but, but they could still learn the tools to be a productive, responsible adult. And uh I guess the, to fulfill that, uh I think the key for everything is communication. And so I think one of the, what things that board would, would be just uh do is to uh reach out to the community and inform them of your goals, your plans, and responsibilities, and what, what you want the schools to do for their children. And then as a board with a governing body, uh then your, your responsibility to, to uh your work to make sure that the staff has the tools necessary that, so that they're able to perform those goals.
Thank you. Question two, what are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member and which is your highest priority and why?
Okay, okay, uh what I'm proud of, I, I think I've been most impressed over years here uh in the area with the relationship that the district staff and the leadership has with the major cities. And I'm speaking mostly about City of Hawaiian Gardens because that's where I, my experience is from. You know, what I learned when I first became on the city council is the board's members came to our city, uh they would come annually and at, at a meeting, they'd ta- talk about their, their goals and stuff and the individual schools, their, what their plans are, what their accomplishments are, what they hope to provide for our community. So I think that that was really great for our kids, our families to hear that kind of message. And uh, uh what I'd like to accomplish, I think it's more of, of reaching out to the community, letting them know that the, the school board is here to support them and their, and their children. And uh, you know, create that, that's uh bond between the city and the community and the school district. So, you know, using the connection that I've had over the years to, to really send the message that we're here to help. And, and no matter where you're at, what, what part of the district your school your kids go to, we're here to help.
Thank you. Question three. As a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role both as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
Okay, I, I, I think it's kind of, maybe I stepped onto this answer on the last question. But it's, but it's really, it's communication, reaching out to the, to the community, and, and yet, again, sharing them what the goals are for the, of the district. And, um, how would I fulfill that, again? It's, it's by being seen, going to school events, uh, going to city events, and, and being the presence there that people can see there's the board, that person represents the school board. And, and they're here, they're here for us. And I think the more people see you, the more comfortable they get with you, and they'll, they'll be able to, to come up to you and, and ask you questions. Uh, maybe talk about issues that they have a concern with. And, you know, you can develop that relationships rather than them having to come to a meeting for the comments and kind of vent. You're, you're there, talk to them in their, in their area where they're more comfortable.
Thank you. Question four. What are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
Unfortunately, you know, speaking with the families in the community, there's, there's this feeling that, that the schools that serve the children in District Seven aren't up to par with some of those, the schools in the other district. When I was there, uh, meeting with the teachers and the principals and going to the schools, I mean, I, I really had good vibes from the staff that they're doing everything they could. They're doing their best to be successful and to have our children be successful. So I don't know how much of that is, uh, you know, just rumor from years and that, that people just repeat and repeat and repeat. But, um, you know, I would hope that we, we together with, again, with the city partnership, will be able to turn that feeling around.
Thank you. Question five. What would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
So I'm, I'm supposing this, talking about like an item on the agenda. So first thing I would do is, if there was something that I need clarification, would contact the superintendent and, and show them the item and ask that they could help me understand because there seems to be something missing or whatever it is that, that I need assistance with. And, you know, hopefully that will take care of it. If not, you know, um, at a meeting, uh, at, at the meeting when the item comes up on the agenda, I would ask my questions. Then too, and hopefully, you know, hopefully, some of the other board members might have the same questions, or maybe, or maybe they'll have the answer that, that I was missing and explain it to me and explain it in a way that I could understand it and feel comfortable with it. And, uh, and, you know, need me, you know, every, every agenda item has a vote, and most of them are pretty much, you know, mundane, annual reports, monthly reports. But when there's, uh, something comes up like this, uh, that, that maybe needs discussion, you know, um, I might vote down, you know? Uh, but that doesn't mean we're gonna vote everything down. That just means, you know, we, we, you know, the board is made up of individuals who, who have their own views and priorities, and, and everybody's maybe reads things or understands things differently. So, but sometimes we're gonna disagree, but that doesn't mean we have to be disagreeable. If, you know, whatever the vote is, move on to the next item.
Thank you. Question six. Describe how you would respond if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot topic.
Okay. Well, first thing I would do is let them know that I'm, I'm ready to listen, you know, and I, and I'm concerned about what their issue is. And hear them out. Um, if it's something that I have information on, maybe I'll talk to them about the pros and cons of the issues. Maybe there's something they don't understand, you know? And so we can, we can work it out together. If it's something that I don't have an answer for, I'll probably ask them to give me a couple of days, and I'll get back to them, and then I'll call you and ask, ask, you know, for the background information of what's going on. And then definitely get back to that person and, you know, sometimes, sometimes you're gonna agree with them, and sometimes you just say that your, 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 your point of view is, is good. You know, but, but the board has a lot of things they have to consider. So, so they may or may, we may or may not agree with what, you know, what you're proposing, but, you know, we really appreciate hearing from you.
Thank you. Question seven. How does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
Okay. Yeah, I mentioned earlier, you know, the, the public comments part of the agenda. Uh, obviously, that's an area where parents can come up, family members, community members, and speak to issues. Uh, and I noticed that if there's something that has a lot of speakers, an item, that you're willing to extend the time allotted so that everybody gets the opportunity to speak. And I think that's really great and really gives the community a chance to speak, you know? But as I say before, sometimes they're just venting and, you know, and you can't really have a discussion with them in that setting. So once again, you know, for me, the work always worked best is being seen in public and knowing if, if I go to a school event, there's gonna be parents there and they may have some, some issues that they wanna discuss, and I'll be willing to discuss with them. And, and, you know, that way you can, there can be a back and forth and not just a one-way discussion. And, you know, there's, there may be something that they didn't understand that the board has to consider, and hopefully we can resolve it.
Thank you. Question eight. Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Okay. Well, I think, uh, my, my reputation is of me being a fair man, you know, my years on the city council. I made an effort to reach out to the school board as a representative of the city of Hawaiian Gardens and to, to be a positive influence. And I think, um, when I first became, became a city council member, my attitude wasn't I was gonna come and blow things apart and change everything. It was more, it was that I was gonna, I'm here to learn and see what policies and programs the city has in place, what their goals are, what they're working towards, and see how I can be a part of it, help them along. And, and maybe there's an area where I can add a little something to tweak it to make it better, I, we don't know. But the main thing is, you know, you have to get along with the fellow board members, you know, because, you know, a hostile environment doesn't accomplish anything. So you need, you need to be able to work together and, you know, learn from the board members who have more experience than I would have because obviously whoever you choose, it's gonna be a curve, learning curve, you know, to get caught up to speed. And hopefully, by, just by watching, learning, listening, and I'll be able to add something.
Thank you. Question nine. What are your ideas to improve the district?
I, I don't know how, how to, how to answer that because my feeling has been, what I've learned from experiences, that when you're on the outside, things will look a lot different than when you're on the inside. So I think it would go back to, first thing I would have to, would want to do is, is watch and learn what's happening, how things work, um, uh, and then gather that information and try to decipher where areas of improvement might be. But I would be hesitant to, to just say, well, you need to fix that, or you need to fix that, because I'm not in the position to know everything that goes on and, and why things are done. Because I know there's a lot of, a lot of rules you gotta comply with, then, you know, from the federal state and everything that makes, or difficult for you to just say, oh, you want this, this, we'll, we'll do it for you. No, it has, you have to be legally correct on what you do as well.
Thank you. Our final question. Please identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about, and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Okay. Uh, it's not recent, but it's something that I was involved in, I'll, I'll bring up. And that was 2009-ish or 10-ish when the, when the economy took a nosy and the school district, uh, all districts, uh, had lost a lot of revenue. And, and one of the, one of the issues that the school board here was having to deal with was where they're gonna, the priorities for, for how they're gonna spend the money. And what they were contemplating was having to close or not have summer school for one particular summer. And, um, it was brought to my attention by a resident, and I spoke to our city manager about it, you know, and said what we could do to help. And, um, because I, you know, I obviously said, you know, summer school is there for kids that need help, that maybe are, are the verge of falling behind, or falling behind, or just need the extra amount of classwork to keep them on par as the end of the school for the following year. And so it, it's something that the parents were concerned about. And, um, also, you know, you have staff issues too because some of your, some of the, uh, staff members and teachers depend on that revenue that they, that they receive teaching summer school and working, and continue to work year-round. And so, um, you know, as a, as a city, we were able to, to assist and, and, and offer to, we offered to work with the school district and the city. At, at that time, ended up funding summer school for that summer, for the schools that serve the kids in our community. And so, um, you know, I think that was something that, it turned out positive, and it was a challenge for the school board, you know, deliberating just how they were gonna do, deal with the shortfall.
Thank you. We appreciate your time this morning.
Okay.
We will now transition to candidate number six. All right, candidate six is Luis Gonzalez.
Good morning.
Good morning. We'll start with question number one. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the role of the Board of Trustees in the fulfillment of that purpose?
I see the basic purpose of public schools as an environment where our students can learn, play, and grow. Give them the options to explore what opportunities they have for their futures, provide much-needed education to assist them in their daily life, and for the betterment of their future. The role of the school board is to implement new standards as required by the Department of Education, provide the resources to improve our schools and prepare our students, serve the public with dignity and respect, and lend an ear to our, to their concerns.
Thank you. Question two. What are you proud of in this district? What would you like to accomplish as a board member? Which is your highest priority and why?
I am proud of all the accomplishments our schools have had throughout the years, awards the district has given, and how our past superintendent was superintendent of the year, and our graduation rate keeps climbing. I would like to keep these accomplishments going, provide the resources where our schools are needed in our community, and make sure our families are aware of current and new program services. My highest priority is making sure public education is accessible to all in our community, and each service is provided to the students in need.
Thank you. Question two, I'm sorry, excuse me, question three. As a trustee, what do you see as your primary purpose or role? How will you fulfill that role both as an individual member of the, as an individual and as a member of the governing board?
The primary purpose role of a trustee would be the voice for our community for those who can't or don't want to speak out in public. I will fulfill that role by being the voice, eyes, and ears of my community.
Thank you. Question four. What are the specific concerns of your community in regard to student academic learning and support?
Concerns I see for trustee Area Seven is the declining enrollment, which in fact is throughout the district. This is concerning as we are concerning what the future may hold for our local schools and the future students to come. Closing schools is the last thing to come to mind, and there should be a way to avoid this if it comes to it.
Thank you. Question five. What would you do if you believed administrators had not provided you with accurate and complete information for making a decision?
I would speak to the administrator to make sure this doesn't occur again as it is vital to have current and complete information to make decisions on topics that can affect the district and students.
Thank you. Question six. Describe your response if a parent cornered you in the grocery store and asked for your support on a particularly hot topic.
This one was a tough question, but I would hear out the parent, thank them for addressing their concern, support to the hot issue, and let them know that I would do my research.
Thank you. Question seven. How does an effective school board ensure opportunities for parents and community members to express their diverse range of views to inform board deliberations on important policy issues?
As in the past with a measure BB, I liked how town halls were held for the public to come in and hear and express their concerns, and the presentations we provided for the families and the community. They also have the opportunity to speak during public comment to address their support concerns. Having town halls as specific guidelines will also allow parents and community members to voice their concern, support. Having a portability for all to speak is key to ensuring our communities know what is going on in the school district.
Thank you. Question eight. Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Strengths I would be, bring as a board member are dedication to our community, district, passion to serve our community, have my own voice and vote on topics to the best of my ability, based on my personal values and for the public. And I've been a public servant for my city currently for the past eleven years. I've been involved in the Little League, I've been involved in nonprofits, and I was a former coach for our teacher high school as well.
Thank you. Question nine. What are your ideas to improve the district?
I would like to continue the award-winning progress our district has had, provide necessary programs needed in our schools, continue the relationship with the fellow board members and cities we serve, and provide the best service we can, drive to continue accomplishing accomplishments and goals we set.
Thank you. The final question this morning. Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about, and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Um, it's not a recent board decision, but the approval and implementation of measure BB, which supported the much-needed modernization of our schools, classrooms, and safety. As a model, we had steps, safety, security, technology, evolution, parity, sustainability. And we are a public school system, and we have to balance out and weigh out options before voting on issues. If appointed, I wouldn't rubber stamp anything that conflicts with my values.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time and for having me here today.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll take a ten-minute break. We'll resume at nine thirty-five. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're back. Uh, we're gonna move to board discussion, and we'll just buzz in, and we'll go in the order that people, people buzz. Please try to limit your comments to five minutes. If you need to go over, you can. Okay, we'll start with Dr. Yenyo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to all the candidates for applying for the position vacated by legendary Dr. Chris Apodaca. One of you will have very big shoes to fill. You can all take a sigh of relief, the difficult part is over. I must say I admire each and every one of you for subjecting yourselves to such a stressful and gut-wrenching event. It shows me your willingness and desire to serve the community of Hawaiian Gardens, trustee area seven, our students and families of our district. I reviewed each and every one of your applications thoroughly. I'm very impressed with some of your commitment to the service of the community of Hawaiian Gardens. Some of you obviously did your studying and are knowledgeable of our district. You cited areas and matters in our district that require improvement, as stated in the California dashboard. I interviewed various officials and community members about the candidates applying for this position. I value their opinion as they have seen your work and dedication firsthand. Some of you come highly recommended. To be transparent, what I'm looking for in a candidate is someone who has not served in this capacity. I'd like to see someone new serve with fresh ideas and different energy. I'd like to see someone fill the vacant seat that not only knows the community of Hawaiian Gardens, but has also been active in our district recently. I'm not in favor of the old guard descending into this position. I'd like to see someone new has, who has not served, ascend into the vacant seat. As for the interview portion, aside from knowing the current issues our district faces, I wanted to see how you presented yourself, your poise, your command presence, your professionalism, and most of all, your ability to handle stress. With that, I will let my voting pattern speak to whom I feel have fulfilled my criteria and reveal who I am in favor of. Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Yenyo. Any other board colleagues like to speak? Clerk Nishii.
Thank you, Mr. President. What are we doing here on a Saturday? We could be out fishing, uh, plenty of things to do on a holiday. So that you guys are here, and not all of you who applied are actually here, so that you're able to continue on in the process is actually really admirable. This is an important job, and I really appreciate that you sacrificing the Saturday. This is not the only time that you'll sacrifice a Saturday if you get picked to this position, by the way. It's not just being up here, it's going to all the schools, going to all the parent meetings, going to the PTAs even if you, if that's what you like. It's working behind the scenes and finding out the truth of the matter, you know, 'cause sometimes your tours, they give you a pretty view, but, but sometimes you wanna get, dig in deep, and that, that's an important part. For a lot of you, this is gonna be a continuation of your public role. If you're on city council, if you're on commissions, you're on PTAs, boosters, all these things are really important, and I urge you to continue on. Whether or not we select you here, it doesn't reflect upon, uh, your ability to continue to be part of our school district, 'cause we need all parts of our school district to be, uh, working. All of the gears need to be working all together, is my opinion. You all bring different pieces of experience, and I'm very much amazed at, at how, uh, how, what a great group of people that we got. We have people who are, um, have evidence-based approach. We have people who, uh, Mr. Axel, did some, a lot of research on our things. Past involvement, absenteeism issues, uh, and you all pretty much know our community. Safety was a critical concern. And even if you're really experienced, some of you had very honest answers. I mean, you expect, uh, the people who've been there for many years to sound polished and clean, but, but getting an honest answer doesn't always go in a straight line. It sometimes goes this way and that way, and that's, that's kind of what's, and not being able to have the answer all the time. That's really a mark of things, 'cause I remember when I first started, I was thinking, oh, I'm gonna do this, 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 and this, and then I came, I was like, oh, so that's some of the issues that are really behind all this. I'm not a teacher, I just have an ear to the, the parents, so, um, um, this is Mission Impossible. It's one of those things where you have different people, different interests, and you have to be right to everybody, but the main thing at the end of the day is the district, the main thing at the end of the day is our kids. And even though we all have different, different beliefs and different thoughts, uh, different approaches, I think at the end of the day, we're all about making sure that our community knows that our schools are represented well in whatever seat that we have here. So that, that will be your job impossible. Sometimes you could be able to fix things, lots of times you might not be able to do that. You wanna be, make everybody happy, but as you all know, you can't make everybody happy, and it's how we protect, make sure that our district as a whole, for all the kids, and that specific kid that talks to you, is served, is gonna be the challenging part and the part that, you know, is hard to learn about. Um, so that's why I thought it's gonna take me a little bit more time. I, like I said, thought each one of you had a great answer. Whether my vote is yes or no on a particular person doesn't mean that, um, I don't believe that they have great value, uh, it's just that this role is very different. Sometimes it requires the experience. So, thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Nishii. Dr. Rios.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gosh, I don't know if my colleagues are experienced in this, but we're a little nervous too. This is a huge, huge decision. But I, I do want to say that, you know, I, I wanna acknowledge each candidate. You know, Angelina, I, I heard your commitment to, to schools and to students. Alba, you talked about achievement, which I appreciated, and, and all the ways that you could make our district better. Francisco, you talked about resources and the, the, the ability for you to bring those resources and enhance, um, them in our district. I heard your desire to serve and to, and to give back, and, and I, and we heard your safe passages, which regardless of what happens, I, I really would like to follow up with that. That sounds like something that our district would benefit from. Axel, you are so articulate, um, your extensive service to communities in need was impressive. Mr. Gomez, I don't really know that I can even say Mike, um, you know, your extensive experience and your knowledge of the community, again, brings a lot to our district. Um, and, and you've been, you have a history of participating in, in all kinds of ways in supporting our students. And Luis, last but not least, you know, you were concise, uh, but again, heard your, your level of service also, also to our communities. I think my decision's gonna come down to a few things, and, um, primarily it's gonna be knowledge of area seven. As a representative of Hawaiian Gardens, um, it's gonna be an important role, and as you know, I was part of the initiate, initiative to break up the district, because we knew that there was such a desperate need for Hawaiian Gardens to be at this, to speak about the challenges that are so unique to our community, um, at every board meeting, not at the, at the comment section, but up here where we had the ability to make decisions. It was knowledge of the needs and challenges, particularly in the area of academics. A passion and a history of servicing the students of Hawaiian Gardens was probably an area that I really looked or, or, or wanted to hear in every applicant, um, because it's a community I know well. I, I grew up there. Um, and fourth and lastly, the potential to be a strong and effective advocate and leader for the community. Because yes, we represent the entire ABC district, but unless we're advocating for a specific trustee area, then, you know, things go unnoticed, or resources don't get brought to that area. And, and so I am looking for that individual to be, to be that person, to again, be a very strong leader and advocate, um, and voice for the children and the families for the area you're gonna represent. And in my opinion, that is Hawaiian Gardens. Um, all our areas can, can benefit from representation, and a lot of us do. But again, Hawaiian Gardens, I think, is in much need of representation. So whoever it is, welcome to the team, know that we, you know, all of you spoke about collaboration, that is important, um, and we'll work with whoever is ultimately. And we'll work with whoever is ultimately appointed. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rios. Next will be board member Suyu.
Good morning, and thank you, President Beach, and thank you, Dr. Zitlow, for preparing. It's only 10 o'clock. We're moving along very fast. Good morning, everyone, and I just want to applaud all the candidates here this morning. And thank you so much for stepping up and applying and going through this process. And this is called a public servant. This is all sacrifice, giving up of your time Saturday morning. And school board meetings is a big sacrifice too. It's like minimum three hours every other Tuesday. Not to mention some of the, you know, engagement and the events and meetings that, you know, we are asked to attend. I was very impressed with each and every candidate. And I know that we have some of the, you know, notable former council member here and some of the young people who graduated from our own ABC District. I'm just so proud of you guys. One of the most important factors that I value is having children in the district is very important because you stay connected. One of the problems that I have seen with our state is that some of the elected leaders are so disconnected with the community and with the parents and the needs. And something like school board, it is so important to reflect the needs of the community, the needs of the students, the needs of that district. And that's why our ABC is divided into seven districts. And each district is a little bit different. And connecting with the diverse languages and the culture. As an immigrant myself, it is very important to make different efforts to reach out to different community because they have different needs. And even academic needs are different and diverse as well. So this is a tough, it's going to be a tough decision today, to make the decision. And, you know, vote today, and we're gonna finalize everything today. However, if we look at our board currently, we're all very different. We have different values. However, that is what America is about, to have tough debates. We can agree to disagree, and it's okay to have different opinions. Yeah. And that reflects the community. Because we're self-governing people. And one of the important, another important factor that I value is a board member who is available, faithful, and reliable. So those are the factors that I will be voting on today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next will be Vice President Se.
Well, I want to echo my colleague, Dr. Rios, what she said. Actually, pretty much that's what I wrote, so I have to change my presentation here. I just want to tell everyone. But I do want to say thank you so much as Vice President of the School District. I very much appreciate you to take this challenge. And it's not easy, come to podium and kind of share your knowledge and your experience in our district. Some of you folks have served so much in our district, such as high school, you know, football thing. That's a big challenge that I really admire. And I, I mean, I just tell you how much you want to serve the district. And some people have lots of experience in our district, know in and out. What I'm looking for, besides Dr. Rios talk about, I'm looking for the resource. What can you bring it to? What you had done for the district? What is the involvement you have in there? I really don't care you're young, you're old, or what. I'm looking something that you can work as this colleague. I check it, I actually, I really check every single person here, the background, where you work, and how's relationship with others. Because the whole thing as an experienced board member here is you need to find somebody that you can partnership together. We don't agree everything. We have a lot of disagree. But even though we have disagree afterwards, we still can talk to each other. That's why the current board members here, we are. And is it hard for us when you have always coming in negative and negative about district or staff or something else? It's not gonna work well. We want somebody to be here to work together. We have agreed, we have disagreed, but we can discuss. But after discuss, how we're gonna work together? That's the person I'm looking for. The resource, you bring it to revenue where you done in the past in the district. That tells me the experience that you have. You've been served the district, you've stood this and that, but what else you do? I'm so glad the people come forward this time. When the staff told me you have nine candidates, I was like, wow, what happened in the past? No one run that position. But this time, it's nine people, there are three people withdraw. But six people stays in there, prepare your presentation here, when they show notice and want to come forward. You already get A+ for me already there. Because the thing you want. But most people know I'm always like, black horse running, the challenge is different. I know some people that I know here, I know your friends, or friends and friends. I know very well. But my point here is who can work with us together? I've been here, this is a four turn already here. If one day when I leave this place, what I leave my colleague here? The people with experience, the people who know what to do, people can bring the revenue to us to help us to work together in the past. There's always agree, again, agree and disagree. But how we're gonna overcome that? That's what I'm looking for, your personal social skills. And which I can got it today right away, working as a director in a hospital. But I want to thank you again for you, you're all A+ to me. You all have done so much either for city or the district. So I'm looking for somebody who can work with us, partnership with us, and makes the best choices. One person had mentioned, I really liked his answer, even though it was like against what we're decision-making here. But you know what? I actually, I gave a four on that matter. Because I think he come forward and tell the truth how he believe, how she, he believed. But I want to thank you, and that will be my end conclusion about this appointed position. Thank you, President Beach.
Thank you. I want to first thank staff, members from the community, and my board colleagues for being here on a Saturday morning for this special meeting. I also especially want to thank the six candidates for coming today, for being engaged, caring about your community, and preparing for the interviews. You all represented trustee area seven very well, and you would all make a good board member. No matter what happens today, I hope you all stay connected with our district. To prepare for today, I reviewed all the applications, which had 13 questions about our district and had your education and current profession. I also spoke with former trustee, Dr. Chris Apodaca, to get his perspective about the needs in Hawaiian Gardens. One candidate's education, experience, and answers here today stood out to me, and that's who I'll be voting for. At this time, we are gonna move to the provisional appointment process. We're gonna take each candidate in order that they drew earlier, and we'll do a roll call vote on each candidate. We're gonna start with candidate number one, Angelina Legoria. Roll call, please, Danielle.
Dr. Eugenio?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Mr. Nishii?
No.
Mrs. Se?
Yes.
Mr. Beach?
No.
Thank you.
Candidate number two, Francisco Noiola.
Dr. Eugenio?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mr. Nishii?
Yes.
Mrs. Se?
No.
Mr. Beach?
Yes.
Thank you.
Candidate number three, Alba Bach.
Dr. Eugenio?
No.
Dr. Rios?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Mr. Nishii?
No.
Mrs. Se?
No.
Mr. Beach?
No.
Thank you.
Next candidate, Axel Roman.
Dr. Eugenio?
No.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mr. Nishii?
Yes.
Mrs. Se?
No.
Mr. Beach?
No.
Thank you.
Next candidate, Michael Gomez.
Dr. Eugenio?
No.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mr. Nishii?
Yes.
Mrs. Se?
Yes.
Mr. Beach?
No.
Thank you.
Last candidate, Luis Gonzalez.
Dr. Eugenio?
No.
Dr. Rios?
No.
Mrs. Yu?
No.
Mr. Nishii?
No.
Mrs. Se?
No.
Mr. Beach?
No.
Thank you.
Danielle, was there a candidate with the highest vote total?
The candidate with the highest vote was Mr. Francisco Noiola with four votes.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to the provisional appointment process. May I have a motion and a second to make a provisional appointment of Francisco Noiola in accordance with Education Code 5091 and ABCUSD Board Bylaw 9223 to fill the vacancy in trustee area number seven.
So moved.
Second, Sophia.
Roll call, please, Danielle.
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Mr. Nishii?
Yes.
Mr. Beach?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Se?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Congratulations, Mr. Noiola. Please come forward, sir. Take the oath of office. Dr. Zitlow?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Francisco Noiola, solemnly swear.
I, Francisco Noiola, solemnly swear.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of California, foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
And I will bear true and faithful allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
At this time, sir, I'd like to offer you the opportunity to make any comments. Just push the button there.
Just thank you to everyone, especially the other candidates. We made a promise outside that we would stick together, even after this. So I promised to keep that promise with you guys. I promised to collaborate with every single one of you guys. You guys all had so much to offer, and I really mean that any one of us could have done this job to the best to represent Hawaiian Gardens. So I hope that we all stick together because we all need that, we all need that teamwork and camaraderie. And I want to thank you guys for giving me this honor. I mean, I look to you guys as Titans at ABC, as, you know, legends already. So I feel immensely honored to be here. And I wanted to thank also the staff, one, for being here on a Saturday, like I mentioned before, but also for your continual dedication. Like I said at my last meeting, Dr. Zitlow was actually my principal. So I feel even more honored to be able to work with her in this capacity, to help her spread our vision and all of our visions. So thank you, guys. And also thank you, there are some teachers here that were very supportive of our students, but also my little brother, Diego, who just graduated from Artesia High School. So thank you, guys. I know the dedication the educators, the staff, and the administrators have. And I hope to keep working with you guys and help do the best job that I can. Thank you, guys.
I just realized, Mr. Noiola, that we now have three guard gladiators on this dais. So blue and gold. So I can make this board one promise. There will be no more special meetings before the summer ends, and we'll move to adjourn. Have a motion?
Second, Nishii.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We're adjourned.